The Seventy-Sixth Regular Session Accepted the credentials of the representative of all member states at its meeting held on first December 2021, and the General Assembly approved the report of the Credentials Committee by its Resolution Seventy-Six slash fifteen of sixth December 2021. This would be without prejudice to the right of member states to submit separate credentials with respect to the Eleventh Emergency Special Session and would not set a precedent for future sessions. I hear no objection. May I take it that it is the wish of the Assembly to accept the credentials approved for the Seventy-Sixth Regular Session for the purpose of the Eleventh Emergency Special Session on an exceptional basis and without setting a precedent? It is so decided. We now turn to the adoption of the agenda. The provisional agenda of the Eleventh Emergency Special Session is contained in Document S slash ES dash eleven slash two. May I take it that the Assembly wishes to adopt the agenda as it appears in Document S slash ES dash eleven slash two? It is so decided. The Assembly will now consider Agenda Item Five, entitled "Later-Dated Twenty-Eighth February 2014 from the Permanent Representative of Ukraine to the United Nations Address to the President of the Security Council", Document S slash twenty-fourteen slash hundred-and-thirty-six. I will now deliver my remarks from the rostrum. His Excellency Antonio Guterres, Secretary-General of the United Nations, Excellencies, distinguished delegates. We are all gravely concerned about the fast deteriorating situation and ongoing military action in Ukraine. As I emphasized last week, the military offensive by the Russian Federation is a violation of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and is inconsistent with the Charter of the United Nations. Today, I renew my call for an immediate ceasefire, for all parties to exercise maximum restraint and for a full return to diplomacy and dialogue. The convening of this Eleventh Emergency Special Session of the General Assembly, rooted in the Charter and mandated in Resolution Three Hundred-and-seventy-seven A five, entitled "Uniting for Peace", is a new opportunity to ensure that the leadership of the United Nations is up to the expectation of the people we serve on matters related to peace and security. It is imperative that we act on behalf of the women, children, and men caught in the crossfire. It is imperative that we pursue all available channels to contain the situation, to de-escalate tension, and to seek peaceful resolution in accordance with international law and the principles of the United Nations Charter. I welcome the announcement by the Secretary-General on Friday that twenty million from the Central Emergency Response Fund will be allocated to the humanitarian crisis in Ukraine. The humanitarian consequences on civilian population, in particular women, children, the elderly, and other vulnerable groups will be devastating. The mass exodus of refugees, including foreign nationals, numbering over half a million from Ukraine to the eastern edge of the European Union, has showed no signs of stopping. Checkpoints at the borders of Poland, Hungary, Slovakia, Romania, and the non-EU members Moldova have turned into choke points. I encourage member states to support humanitarian initiatives as they become available. My dear friends, there are no winners in war, but countless lives are torn apart. To that effect, security and access for humanitarian efforts must be guaranteed. Excellencies, the United Nations Charter, drafted so soon after the Second World War, is based on the principle of sovereign equality. It outlines a world where member states settle their international disputes by peaceful means without the threat or use of force. The ongoing military offensive is inconsistent with this. It is an affront to the founders of this organization and everything it stands for. The violence must stop. Humanitarian law and international humanitarian law must be respected, and diplomacy and dialogue must prevail. Excellencies, my dear colleagues, in April 1946, the League of Nations dissolved. And in twenty-six years of the existence of an organization which ultimately had proven incapable of preventing the outbreak of the most destructive war in human history, it was the League's failure to provide a mechanism for the enforcement of the international collective security that exposed its most fatal force. The Right Honourable Viscount Robert Cecil, one of the original architects behind the League of Nations, in his final eulogy to the League said: "The League is dead; long live the United Nations." We are now in the Seventy-Sixth year of the existence of the United Nations. Let us remind ourselves that we founded the United Nations to maintain international peace and security and to that end, to take effective collective measures for the prevention and removal of threats to peace and to bring about by peaceful means and in conformity with the principles of justice and international law, adjustments or settlements of international disputes or situations. Yesterday, a rear window of opportunity opened up for dialogue. As we convene here in the General Assembly, negotiators from both sides are holding talks in Belarus. This offers a ray of hope. We pray that these talks will calm down tempers and pave way to peace. Excellencies, dear colleagues, the General Assembly, with its hundred-and-ninety-three member states, represents the collective conscience of humanity. The strength of this assembly is rooted in its moral authority. Let us demonstrate that moral courage and use today's debate not to whip up rhetoric, not to whip up war rhetoric, but to give peace a chance. Let us ignite the fire of love, humanity, compassion, and hope. Guns are better off when noted. Let peace prevail. I thank you. I now give the floor to the Secretary-General of the United Nations, His Excellency Antonio Guterres.
Mr. President of the General Assembly, Excellencies, the fighting in Ukraine must stop. It's raging across the country from air, land, and sea. It must stop now. Russian missiles and air bombardments have been pounding Ukrainian cities day and night. The capital, Kyiv, is encircled from all sides. In the face of the continuing attacks, Kyiv's three million residents are being forced to seek safety in their homes, improvised bomb shelters, and the city's subways. The Ukrainian government has distributed a meaningful number of arms to the population with the stated objective to participate in the defense of the country. According to NHCR, half a million Ukrainians have fled across the country's borders. Although Russian strikes are reportedly largely targeting Ukrainian military facilities, we have credible accounts of residential buildings, critical civilian infrastructure, and other non-military targets sustaining heavy damage. This escalating violence, which is resulting in civilian deaths, including children, is totally unacceptable. Enough is enough. Soldiers need to move back to their barracks, and leaders need to move to peace. Civilians must be protected. International humanitarian and human rights law must be upheld. The sovereignty, independence, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders must be respected in line with General Assembly resolutions. Mr. President, we are facing a tragedy for Ukraine, but also a major regional crisis with potentially disastrous implications for us all. Yesterday, Russian nuclear forces were put on high alert. This is a chilling development. The mere idea of a nuclear conflict is simply unconceivable. Nothing can justify the use of nuclear weapons. Mr. President, we face what could easily become Europe's worst humanitarian and refugee crisis in decades with the numbers of refugees and internally displaced multiplying by the minute. I am grateful for the compassion, generosity, and solidarity of Ukraine's neighbors who are taking in those seeking safety. It is important that this solidarity is extended without any discrimination based on race, religion, or ethnicity. The neighboring countries will need all our support in the days and weeks to come. The United Nations will continue to assist with these efforts. Mr. President, on Saturday, I spoke with President Zelensky and assured him that the United Nations would not abandon the Ukrainian people and conveyed our determination to enhance humanitarian assistance. Even before the events of the past week, the UN was providing some three million people on both sides of the contact line with humanitarian assistance. The United Nations is now working twenty-four times seven to assess humanitarian needs and scale up the delivery of lifesaving support to many more people desperate for protection and shelter, particularly women and children, elderly people, and those with disabilities. We are fully committed to staying and delivering for everyone affected by this deadly conflict across the country. Some of our personnel are expanding existing programs and others are preparing new operations to get help to those who need it fast. I want to highlight three concrete actions. First, I've allocated twenty million US dollars from the Central Emergency Response Fund to support emergency operations along the contact line in the eastern oblasts of Donetsk and Luhansk and in other parts of the country. This will allow us to help more vulnerable people get the basics: shelter, food, water, and else care as soon as possible. Second, I have appointed Amin Awad as the UN Crisis Coordinator for Ukraine. He will liaise with the government and with all relevant actors on the ground, supported by the resident humanitarian coordinator and UN Country Team. At the same time, we are bringing together partners in and outside the country and surging personnel into the country. Third, tomorrow we will launch two coordinated emergency appeals for Ukraine and the region. One that addresses escalating humanitarian needs inside the country, including rising internal displacement, and another that responds to the needs of people crossing international borders to seek refuge in countries neighboring Ukraine. As we ramp up our efforts, it is essential that the safety and security of UN and associated personnel in Ukraine are protected in accordance with international law and that humanitarian access to vulnerable people and communities is guaranteed. I call on all sides to uphold their obligations while our freedom of movement of humanitarian personnel and it takes safe, rapid, and unimpeded passage of humanitarian relief. I also urge the international community to mobilize in support of our funding appeals to address the needs of all those displaced by this crisis as well as other vulnerable groups whose numbers will only grow as the fighting escalates. Mr. President, humanitarian aid is vital, but it is not a solution. It is simply treating the worst impacts of the conflict. The only true solution is peace. The attack on Ukraine challenges international law and the multilateral system rooted in the UN Charter. Some of the possible consequences of a worsening conflict are terrifying to contemplate. Regional tensions are rising. The latest security measures underline the high stakes for all. The economic repercussions of the crisis will have widespread impact, and I count on every member state to live up to the principles of the Charter. Mr. President, the guns are talking now, but the passive dialogue must always remain open. It's never too late to engage in good-faced negotiations and to address all issues peacefully. I hope that the direct talks now taking place between Ukrainian and Russian delegations will produce not only an immediate halt to the fighting but also a path towards a diplomatic solution. I welcome and encourage all peaceful efforts to end the bloodshed and end this conflict. I thank the countries who have offered to host and facilitate negotiations. The United Nations is ready to support such efforts. Mr. President, war is not the answer. It is death, human suffering, senseless destruction, and then immense destruction and then immense destruction from the real challenges facing humanity: the climate crisis and biodiversity loss, vitally needed socio-economic recovery from the pandemic, healing the divides of race and gender, and so many other pressing twenty-first century challenges. Humanity cannot afford to be locked in a mindset that dredges up the worst of past centuries. We need to look forward as United Nations to overcome the scourge of war. We need to focus on solving problems, not making them worse. In cities around the world, people are taking to the streets and demanding an end to war. People in Ukraine want and need peace, and I believe people in the Russian Federation do too. We need peace now. Thank you.
I thank the Secretary-General for his statement. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ukraine.
Mr. President, Secretary-General. For the first time since the United Nations was born, there is a full-fledged war in the center of Europe. Everyone in this hall and everyone in the world knows that Russia, and Russia alone, started this invasion, now facilitated by Belarus. This war was not provoked. It was chosen by someone who is right now sitting in the bunker. We know what happened with the person who sat in the bunker in Berlin in May 1945. Before I continue with my formal statement, I would like to switch to Russian and invite you to put on the headphones. Because I would like to read from the screenshot of the smartphone of a killed Russian soldier. That's an actual screenshot from someone who is dead already. Lesh.
Allosha. How are you doing? Why has it been so long since you responded? Are you really in during in training exercises? asks the mother of the killed soldier. Moments before he was killed. Mom, I'm no longer in Crimea. I'm not in training sessions. Where are you then? Papa is asking whether I can send you a parcel. What kind of a parcel, Mama, can you send me? What are you talking about? What happened? Mama, I'm in Ukraine. There is a real war raging here. I'm afraid. We are bombing all of the cities together, even targeting civilians. We were told that they would welcome us. And they are falling under our armored vehicles, throwing themselves under the wheels and not allowing us to pass. They call us fascists. Mama, this is so hard. And this was several moments before he was killed.
Imagine, if you want to just visualize the magnitude of the tragedy, you have to imagine next to you, next to every nameplate of every single country in this General Assembly, more than thirty souls of killed Russian soldiers already. Next to every name of every single country in this Assembly, thirty-plus killed Russian soldiers. Hundreds of killed Ukrainians. Dozens of killed children. And it goes on and on and on. So just imagine those killed people next to you when you will listen to my formal statement. Big militarized powers seeking for geopolitical greatness has launched a full-fledged military offensive against a smaller neighbor aimed at invading the country. Deadly airstrikes dropped on civilians' heads across the entire country and the Russian troops crossed Ukraine's borders from the territory of Belarus and the occupied parts of Ukraine, Donbas and Crimea. Does it remind you of something? Doesn't it? Indeed, indeed. Very clear parallels could be drawn with the beginning of the Second World War, too. And the Russia's course of action is very similar to what their spiritual mentors from the Third Reich employed on the Ukrainian land eighty years ago. Just one, the most recent example. Example of human sufferings. Example of war crime. As all of us were on our way to the General Assembly today, the Russian army shelled with Grad multiple rocket launcher systems the residential areas of the city of Kharkiv. The second biggest in Ukraine, innocent civilians have been killed and wounded. The exact numbers is very difficult to estimate because of the warfare while the negotiations are still underway at the border with Belarus. We therefore express our gratitude for overwhelming support that made this decision on the emergency session possible. We are grateful to the President of the General Assembly for his taking care of this idea well in advance. We appreciate the engagements engagement of the UN Secretary-General who has taken a very strong stance in support of peace, in support of the UN Charter. We have been prompted to call for an emergency special session as the level of threat to the global security has been equated to that of the Second World War or even higher following Putin's order to put an alert Russian nuclear forces. What a madness! If he wants to kill himself, he doesn't need to use nuclear arsenal. He has to do what the guy in Berlin did in a bunker in May 1945. The Security Council addressed the issue of the Russian war against Ukraine, and the decision was not adopted due to the obvious reason. The country adapting to occupy Ukraine since 2014 has occupied the seat of the Council's permanent member since 1991. Therefore, we do not accept the Russian logic that the Security Council was unable to act due to one-sided and unbalanced approach. The only guilty party is the Russian Federation. Distinguished delegates, Russia uses all its military potential to attack Ukraine and has begun redeploying reserve units on the border with Ukraine. It fires cruise and ballistic missiles at cities, attacks with aviation, tanks, and artillery, sensor subversion and reconnaissance groups which mark residential buildings in preparation for the air attacks. Russia's missiles are now aimed at destroying the infrastructure objects. They targeted the radioactive waste disposal site near Kyiv, the fuel base in the town of Vassiliv, that is effectively Kyiv's suburb. The objects of logistic infrastructure, including bridges, airports, and water reservoirs remain among the targets. Such towns as Shasty and Stanitsa Lugansk near Lugansk are now nearly destroyed, as well as residential buildings in and around Kyiv and Kharkiv. The Russian forces seized the Chernobyl Nuclear Power Station at the part of southern Kherson region, including the north Crimean Canal. Due to the active moving of Russian heavy militaries through the Chernobyl exclusion zone, the radiation level has increased rapidly. Due to the active moving of Russian heavy militaries through the Chernobyl Exclusion Zone, the radiation level has increased rapidly. In the Black Sea, Russian warships deliberately attacked two civil vessels under the flags of Panama and Moldova approaching Ukraine. These constitutes a flagrant violation of the international law of the sea. Incredibly, some, one of the vessels had the Russian crew. Still, it was attacked by the Russians. Russians keep attacking kindergartens and orphanages, thus committing war crimes and violating the Rome Statute. Hospitals and mobile medical aid brigades are also targeted by the Russian shelling and the sabotage groups working in Ukraine's cities and towns. The Russian military fired on ambulance crews in the areas of Zaporizhia and Kiev. In Akhtirka district of Sumy region, Russian tanks shot down a bus with civilians. Later, the Russian military does not allow, did not allow ambulances on the spot. As of today, three hundred fifty-two people, including sixteen children, were killed on the Ukrainian side and two thousand forty Ukrainians, including forty-five children wounded during the first five days of the Russian invasion. And this number is growing nonstop. I have already told about the morning shellings in Kharkiv, and we cannot really estimate at this moment how many were killed. In response, Ukraine has activated its right for self-defense, according to the Article fifty-one of the UN Charter. The Russian troops are suffering losses, aircrafts, helicopters, tanks, trucks, personnel. The aggressor forces have already lost more than five thousand in manpower during the first days of aggression. Excellencies, the General Assembly should be vocal in demanding from the Russian Federation to stop its offensive against Ukraine. In recognizing Russian actions as an act of aggression against sovereign and independent state, in demanding from Russia to immediately, completely and unconditionally withdraw its forces from the territory of Ukraine with within its internationally recognized borders. In demanding from the Russian Federation to reverse the decision related to the status of certain areas of Donetsk and Lugansk regions of Ukraine. In demanding full compliance with the provisions of international humanitarian law. The General Assembly should also be clear with regard to the treacherous role of Belarus and its involvement in aggression of the Russian Federation against Ukraine. Distinguished members of the General Assembly, what is happening now in Ukraine has already had the security and humanitarian implications for all of you. Immediately for Europe, a bit later for the rest, including in terms of food, security, energy security, financial markets, collapse of the economies. Last September, my president said while delivering his statement at the high-level segment of the seventy-sixth session of the General Assembly. And I quote, "I understand that criticism of the UN is often heard, but we criticize ourselves." End of quote. If we fail to respond now, we will face much more than criticism. We will face oblivion. It must not happen. Now it is time to act, time to help Ukraine that is paying now the ultimate price for freedom and security of itself and of the world. If Ukraine does not survive intention, eh eh survive, international peace will not survive. If Ukraine does not survive, the United Nations will not survive. Have no illusions. If Ukraine does not survive, we cannot be surprised if democracy fails next. Now we can save Ukraine, save the United Nations, save democracy, and defend the values we believe in. And that Ukrainians are fighting for and paying with their lives. The Russian delegate will speak shortly. Putin has done everything to delegitimize the Russian presence in the United Nations. But I wonder if the Russian presence in the United Nations has ever been legitimate. I wonder if ever this whole, this assembly voted in accordance with paragraph two of Article four on admission of the Russian Federation to the United Nations. Either in December nineteen ninety-one or in January nineteen ninety-two or wherever thereafter. I want to ask the delegates whose countries voted for admission of the Russian delegation to the United Nations to raise their hand to confirm that Russia was admitted to the United Nations according to the Charter. Please, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, please raise your hand if your country voted in the formal session of the General Assembly. In reply to the letter by President Yeltsin dated December twenty-four nineteen ninety-one, when he told the United Nations that Russia would like to be a continiator state of the demolished Soviet Union. Anyone? Shall I put my glasses if my vision fails me and I don't see any hand raised? Any country? Anyone voted for Russian membership? I leave you with that and think about it when you listen to the Russian delegate.
I thank the distinguished representative of Ukraine. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Mister President, Mister Secretary General, distinguished colleagues. In recent days, the Ukrainian issue has eh made headlines, global headlines, and is now been given pride of place at the UN Security Council and now the General Assembly. At the same time, Russian actions are being distorted and thwarted, and there is the number of incredible fakes is staggering with the use eh with media outlets and social networks proliferating eh these lies. For this reason, today I wish to focus on the real reasons for the crisis that has emerged and its possible consequences. I wish to emphasize the following. The root for the current crisis lies in the actions of Ukraine itself. For many years, it sabotaged and flouted its direct obligations under the Minsk package of measures. Just recently, very recently, there was a hope that in Kiev they would reconsider and that they would indeed comply with what they signed on to back in twenty fifteen. For that, first and foremost, what was necessary was direct dialogue as set out in the document between Donetsk and Lugansk. However, the latest confirmation from the senior leadership of the coun- of the country was that Ukraine was unwilling to engage in this dialogue. And they took eh eh unwilling to take steps to grant special status to Donbass con- and eh as set out in the Minsk agreements, and this was actively supported by the Western patrons of Kiev. And this definitively persuaded us of the fact that we no longer have a right to allow the residents of Donbass to suffer any further. Insofar as Ukrainian provocations against the people of Donbass in February did not end. In fact, they escalated. The leadership of DPR and LPR turned to us with a request to deliver military support in line with bilateral agreements on cooperation, which were arrived at eh with their recognition, concurrently with recognition, and this was a logical step to the ongoing, the persistent aggressive actions that undertaken by the Ukrainian regime, the Ukrainian authorities, which has of late been actively eh armed and incited by a number of states were under the misconception that with the eh the 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 indulgence of Western patrons and sponsors, they would be able to address the issues in Bas militarily. It is difficult, otherwise, it would be difficult to explain the ongoing intensification of shelling and sabotage acts on the territory of the republics which I mentioned. The people of Donbass and Lugansk conti- eh continued to have to take shelter in basements. There was a flood of refugees entering the Russian Federation, and the yet still, the nature of the Ukrainian Armed Forces operation did not change. And yet, Western partners did not wish eh turned a blind eye to this, and they merely echoed Ukrainian tall tales about the allegations that Donbass people were shelling on themselves. The worsening eh suffering of the residents of Donbass is something that has left Western sponsors unmoved. In recent years, this discussion at the Security Council General Assembly, there was no empathy whatsoever, no compassion for the people of Donbass and Lugansk. It seems that these four million people simply don't exist for them. And as a result, the ongoing threats targeting the people of LPR and DPR, given the lack of prospects for addressing the problems in the area under the Minsk operations due to the fail- failure to fulfill. Then the Russian president took a decision for a specially military, special military operation to be carried out in Donbass. Occupation of Ukraine is not part of this, of these plans. The goal of the special operation is to protect the people who for eight years were subject to torment and gen- and genocide by the Kiev regime. To that end, there is a, we, there's a need to demilitize and de-Nazify Ukraine. We further will strive to hold accountable those who carried out countless brutal crimes against the people eh the residents, eh including eh residents of the Russian Federation. This decision was taken in line with Article fifty-one of the United Nations Charter with a sanction of the Federation Council of the Russian Federation in pursuant of the Agreement on Friendship and Cooperation with DPR and LPR. I wish to recall further that the principle sovereignty and territorial integrity of states eh 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 is 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 something which we are being accused of breaching vis-à-vis Ukraine. The Declaration of Principles of International Law on Friendly Relations Between Peoples was adopted in nineteen seventy, and it needs to be instinctively complied with with respect to states, I quote, complying in eh conducting themselves in compliance with the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples as described above, and thus possessed of a government representing the whole people belonging to the territory without distinction as to race, creed, or color. End of quote. Today's government of Ukraine is no such government. Moreover, during the special military operation, Russia has been exercising its right to self-defense from a regime that has been striving to gain access to nuclear weapons. The president of Ukraine explicitly stated this on eighteen February during the Munich Conference, and this, I would recall, this statement that he delivered was met with applause by the participants of this conference. At the same time, Ukraine is seeking membership in NATO where there's Act eh Article Five in effect and has territorial claims to the Russian Federation. Hence, in by leveraging Article fifty-one of the UN Charter, not only is Russia protecting itself from the nationalist threat, but Russia is also seeking to uphold the purposes and principles of the United Nations Charter on the soil of Donbass and Ukraine, ensuring that the main goal of the United Nations be upheld, namely to eh to prevent succeeding generations from a scourge of war. Unfortunately, it behooves us to note the very negative role played in all of this by Western colleagues led by the United States. Instead of per, instead of compelling Kiev to comply with these obligations, instead, they are merely inciting Kiev, egging it on, repeating the senseless mantra that their obligations under the Minsk agreements are not being complied with the Russian Federation, which I should like to recall and emphasize, Russian Federation is not a party to it. Moreover, our Western colleagues have shamelessly inundated the country with weapons, have sent to the country um instructors and effectively incited Ukrainians eh who are facing a one hundred twenty thousand-strong military contingent eh to in prompted them to engage in armed provocation against the Donbass. Eh this thereby, the Western countries have created a bubble that cannot but pop. Distinguished colleagues, discussing eh to today, it, in this discussion, it behooves us to note eh that eh back in two thousand eight, Russian president at the NATO Bucharest Council eh 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 cautioned that members of the North eh, members of NATO should think three times before proudly say stating that Ukraine and Georgia will join NATO. And this was eh met, this was eh portrayed as some kind of a great compromise eh, whi- which eh was immediately met with eh action plans undertaken in Ukraine and Georgia to join eh the alliance. At the same time, in two thousand fourteen, there was a brutal anti-constitutional coup which took place in Kiev, as a result of which nationalists and radicals seized po- eh power. And their policy was to create an anti-Russia in Ukraine and to ensure that it join NATO, and I will revisit that. For us, Ukraine joining NATO is a red line. First and foremost, from the military strategic eh level, the deployment of NATO infrastructure in that country would eh compel us to adopt measures in response eh which, and this has placed us at the verge of conflict. For this reason, in December twenty twenty-one, we proposed that agreements be arrived at with the US and NATO eh for security assurances to be provided eh to the Russian Federation. However, our extended hand was unceremoniously, unceremoniously rebuffed by Americans and NATO representatives. It was proposed that we proposed that we continue to discuss secondary issues without consideration of our concerns. Moreover, eh hmm the question was not addressed as to eh the eh how the freedom of choosing alliances as set out in the OSCE aligns with the principles of indivisibility of security, which is of great importance to us. Probably many of you wonder what should be done now and what can, role can the United Nations play in addressing the Ukrainian process eh Ukrainian crisis? We believe that the UN can and should play its role, help to bring the stakeholders' positions closer together and to eradicate the causes of conflict. The key role here, according to the Charter, should be played by and fall allies with the Security Council. However, attempts to calmly discuss this issue is something our partners did not deign to undertake. For this reason, the Russian Federation on twenty-five February voted against the anti-Russian and anti-Ukrainian draft resolution of the Security Council. It is anti-Russian, this document. There's no need to explain why. It suffice to get, have a cursory glance at the document. Why is it anti-Ukrainian, the document? Because this document, beyond any doubt, is inconsistent with the root interest of the Ukrainian people insofar as it is an attempt to salvage and to cement Ukra- in Ukraine those authorities who brought the country to the brink of tragedy, and this tragedy has been ongoing for eight years. Now, the main reason for our negative vote was not what was in the draft, but what was not included in the draft. If the sponsors were to attempt to make it even remotely balanced, then they would not have left out issues that need to be addressed in the context of the Ukrainian issue. Specifically, what was unaddressed was the way that the anti-constitutional coup in Ukraine, in in Kiev in February twenty fourteen resulted in the Maidan junta seizing power and using it against the residents, shelling civilian areas with artillery pieces and multiple rocket launchers and raining bombs on the people of Donbass and Lugansk. What was unaddressed was how the Ukrainian authorities, with the tolerance and indulgence of Western sponsors, consistently and cynically shirk their obligations to implement the Minsk agreement. At the same time, at the line of contact, Ukrainian death squads, first and foremost comprised of neo-Nazi radical elements methodically, day after day, shelled the residential areas of DPR and LPR, killing women, children, the elderly. This is ongoing today. How can we fail to mention the fact that the Ukrainian nationalists have been perpetrating crimes for all these eight years? The protesters against Maidan and Odessa were burned alive. The peaceful protesters eh and the Maidan were shot out, killed by snipers. The investigation into these tragedies by the Maidan regime was deliberately swept onto the rug. At the same time, the perpetrators in the Odessa tragedy are well-known. They are flaunting their presence and an alternative investigation into the reasons eh into the acknowledgement by the sni- snipers unambiguously emphasizes that the slaughter on Independence Square was a provocation by the leaders of Maidan. We specifically last year held an informal Security Council Aria Forum meeting on this issue in order to provide colleagues at the Security Council more information about this. However, in response, at best, we heard from Western pay eh pons sponsors merely hackneyed cliches about Russian propaganda. What kind of a text resolution on Ukraine can there be in above-mentioned circumstances? Eh there's a need to ensure that the text, there was a need for the text to have a frank assessment of the role in inflating the Ukrainian crisis played by Western colleagues who not only eh were present in the Minsk negotiations, but effectively gave Kiev carte blanche to carry out any actions or steps that would be unthinkable for any civilized states. With tales being spun about the triumph of democracy in Ukraine, the Maidan authorities and nationalists engaged in with impunity murdering political opponents, persecuting opposition, shuttering opposition television outlets eh where there could be some relatively objective information provided. Six of those television channels were shuttered under Zelensky alone. And how could we fail to mention the fact that the country was flooded with weapons, which were then turned on peaceful civilians in Donbass? The responsibility for what is taking place right now lies at the feet of the current Ukrainian leadership as well as our Western colleagues. Today eh to 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 today, we wish to emphasize that this has been inflated by the lies, deceit, misinformation from the Ukrainian Armed Forces and and the nationalist Western media outlets increasingly shamelessly are portraying our military operation as a result, as a negative consequence. We constantly hear lies, fakes about indiscriminate shelling of Ukrainian cities, hospitals, schools, kindergartens. The Russian Army does not pose a threat to the civilians of Ukraine, is not shelling civilian areas in areas and cities where Russian Armed Forces have taken control. And these areas are seeing citizens living their lives normally, basic infrastructure, transportation, local infrastructure, and law and order is being upheld. And this includes the electrical station, the power plant, which is jointly patrolled by Russian representatives and the special Ukrainian police who are present in the area. The Chernobyl plant is also operating normally. The threat to the residents of Ukraine presently is posed by Ukrainian nationalists who have effectively taken hostage the residents of Ukraine. And they are using them, they are hiding themselves behind them and using them as human shields. There is abundant evidence from ordinary Ukrainians that nationalists, despite their protests, have been deploying heavy equipment and multiple rocket launchers in residential areas. This is an egregious violation of international humanitarian law, which needs to be duly condemned. Effectively, this is the same tactic that is being used by ISIL terrorists. All of the responsibility for the possible repercussions lies at the feet of the Maidan regime. The residents of Ukraine are also threatened by the unfettered, uncontrolled radical elements giving to all of those who wish, including criminals who have specifically been released from prison. They are now receiving weapons, and the looters and moraders and criminals are now using them to target civilians. There is sufficient and abundance evidence of this from residents of Kiev and other cities. This demonstrates the recklessness of Ukraine authorities vis-à-vis their women. Just now, we received a letter from the Ukrainian Human Rights Civic Organization, the Social Policy and Social Protection Institute, under the name of Irina Birezhna. For eight years, this body has been informing international structures about how the neo-Nazism was born and proliferated in Ukraine and how it has been and continues to be upheld at the state level. I briefly quote today, “The opiate of the recklessness and lawlessness of neo-Nazis in Ukraine was that condemned criminals have been released from prison. They have carried out grave crimes, murders, etc. Only in Kiev, those who are willing, received 25,000 machine guns without any documentation. Killings, looting, crime is ongoing. Those so-called territorial defenders of Ukraine, shot at a car, killing parents and a girl, a young girl. Two children are in hospital critically wounded. The former acting president, following the unconstitutional coup in February 2014, Turchinov, called on all citizens who are not indifferent to slaughter Russians throughout the territory of the country. And this, despite the fact that the most recent document for Ukraine in 2019 sets out that 16, almost 17%, and actually far more, people are Russian there. Now, against the Russian Federation, in social networks and information war has been unleashed, insofar as evidence of destruction of civilian infrastructure by Russian military does not exist. Ukrainian attacks and accidental attacks bear out the fact that Ukrainian nationalists are carrying out this violence. Social networks have training manuals about how to create fakes to taint our military operation. Throughout Ukrainian social networks, there are 1.2 million such pieces of fake news. And the correspondence that was read out by the Ukrainian ambassador, that conversation that was read out is also a part of these facts, and these fakes, this is well-known. We also did not support the draft resolution for this issue to move from the Security Council and be addressed by the General Assembly Special Session today. We were guided by the fact that this measure proposes that we register that the Security Council failed to comply, to uphold its main responsibility for the maintenance of international peace and security. And at the same time, there was not even a hint at an attempt to find a constructive solution at the Security Council. Attempts to circumvent the position of the Russian Federation, to disregard the position of the Russian Federation, runs counter to the very bedrock of the United Nations. There is a need to find common ground, regardless of our Western partners’ attempts to avoid this, including when they disregarded our legitimate concerns in connection with NATO policy and Western countries’ breach of the core principles of the OSCE on indivisibility of security. To conclude, Mr. President, I wish to state that the Russian Federation did not begin these hostilities. The hostilities were unleashed by Ukraine against its own residents, the residents of Donbass, and all of those who are dissenters. Russia is seeking to end this war. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the European Union.
Mr. President, I have the honor to speak on behalf of the European Union and its member states. North Macedonia, Montenegro, Albania, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Iceland, Norway, Republic of Moldova, Georgia, San Marino, Andorra, Monaco, and Liechtenstein align themselves with this statement. Mr. President, I want to thank you for convening us here today and for the Secretary General to be here and for all of you colleagues being here. It’s very important that the facts are heard and fully understood and that this body is able to take the appropriate decisions after the fact that the Security Council, thanks to the veto by one country alone, stopped this council from taking that decision. Let me start by expressing the European Union’s full solidarity and support to Ukraine and its people, who are courageously fighting an unprovoked and unjustified military aggression from Russia. Since our meeting here in the General Assembly last week, the situation has dramatically escalated, despite tireless diplomatic efforts, including at the highest level. Russia has decided to turn its back to peace, to the rules-based international order as defined inter alia in the UN Charter, to diplomacy and to the international community. Russia’s military attack against Ukraine has already caused an alarming number of deaths, injured, internally displaced, and refugees. We condemn, in the strongest possible terms, the unprovoked invasion of Ukraine by armed forces of the Russian Federation in violation of Ukraine’s independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity. We also condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine. And we call on both Russia and Belarus to abide by their international obligations. We’re also alarmed by Russia’s raising of the nuclear alert level. We call on Russia to de-escalate and to immediately return to the previous alert level of its nuclear arsenal and to avoid any actions that could risk the safety or security of the nuclear power plants in Ukraine, a non-nuclear weapons state under the Nuclear Nonproliferation Treaty. Russia bears full responsibility for this aggression and the resulting destruction and loss of life. We demand from Russia to cease its military operations immediately and unconditionally and to withdraw all forces and military equipment from the entire territory of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. We further call on Russia to engage in earnest in dialogue with a view to political and diplomatic solution. Russia’s actions grossly violate international law and are in clear breach of the UN Charter and the OSCE Helsinki Final Act, as well as Russia’s specific commitments to respect Ukraine’s sovereignty and territorial integrity under the Budapest Memorandum of 1994. This is arguably the biggest aggression in Europe since the end of the Second World War. It follows similar Russian aggression against its neighbors in 2008 and 2014. We underscore our firm support for the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Georgia and of the Republic of Moldova, and we are closely monitoring the situation in the region. This assembly has the responsibility immediately and effectively to acknowledge and address Russia’s actions. Failing to do so will erode trust to the rules-based global order with the UN at its core and the UN Charter itself. It would send the wrong message to perpetrators of such aggression and aggravate similar risks to other UN member states in the region and beyond. We stand firmly by Ukraine and its people. We deplore the loss of life and human suffering. This is a dire humanitarian catastrophe, and humanitarian needs are rapidly increasing. With the toll of IDPs and refugees rising, humanitarian support is a priority in the wider package of EU support offered to Ukraine in these trying days. The UN’s member states are providing urgently needed humanitarian assistance to the Ukrainian population. Ukraine has activated the Union’s civil protection mechanism and is receiving urgently needed supplies from EU member states. In addition, the Republic of Moldova, to which more than 60,000 Ukrainians have fled, has requested and received EU humanitarian support in dealing with the human catastrophe caused deliberately by the Russian Federation’s invasion of Ukraine. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to respect international law, including international humanitarian law. Civilians and civilian infrastructures must be protected, and humanitarian access should be secured. We call on Russia and Russia-backed armed formations to allow safe and unhindered humanitarian access and stop their disinformation campaign and cyber attacks. We strongly condemn the involvement of Belarus in this aggression against Ukraine and call on it to immediately stop action and to abide by its international obligations. We call our unwavering support for the independence, sovereignty, and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders. And we call on all UN members not to recognize the two self-proclaimed separatist entities. The EU has reacted swiftly and decisively to Russia’s recognition of Ukraine’s self-proclaimed separatist entities and the invasion of Ukraine by adopting restrictive measures. We intend to take such measures against Belarus. Mr. President, let us be clear on this. We firmly believe that the use of force and coercion to change borders has no place in the 21st century. Let us recall that the UN Charter prohibits both the threat and the use of force against the territorial integrity or political independence of any state or in any other manner inconsistent with the purposes of the United Nations. Tensions and conflict should be resolved through dialogue and diplomacy. The EU, together with like-minded partners, have been united in making unprecedented efforts to achieve a diplomatic solution. But Russia has not reciprocated these efforts and instead opted unilaterally for a grave and premeditated escalation. With this one-sided step, Russia is further isolating itself. We are today at a crucial and historical moment. Too many times in the past, the international community has been blind or too slow in front of unfolding tragedies. Entire generations in many places around the world, many of you representing them, have paid and are still paying the price of inaction. We cannot make the same mistake again. We have to take action. After Russia’s veto in the Security Council last week, the General Assembly has the responsibility to send a strong and united message on the need for Russia to immediately and unconditionally cease its military operations, withdraw its troops, and opt for genuine dialogue. We call on Russia to avoid, in particular, any action that places the safety and security of Ukraine’s nuclear and radioactive waste installations at risk. The people of Ukraine and the whole world are watching us and counting on us and will judge us on the decisions that we will take here in this special emergency session. And it’s our duty and responsibility for all of us to do our utmost to defend the UN Charter and the international order. We therefore hope that this assembly will massively support the resolution tabled by Ukraine and its partners. The EU and its member states will continue to do their utmost to protect the integrity of the rules-based international system, which is key to our collective security. And we call on all UN member states to do the same. On our side, we will continue to stand by Ukraine, support its democratically elected institutions and representatives and its people, including through additional political, financial, humanitarian, and logistical support. I thank you very much, colleagues. I thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of the European Union. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Denmark on behalf of the Nordic Baltic countries.
I have the honor to speak on behalf of the eight Nordic Baltic countries: Estonia, Finland, Iceland, Latvia, Lithuania, Norway, Sweden, and my own country, Denmark. Mr. President, on the night of 24th February, the Russian leadership decided to attack Ukraine. Let me be clear. We condemn, in the strongest terms possible, the invasion of Ukraine by the Russian Federation. People around the world are watching with horror the tragedy unfolding in Ukraine. A member state of this organization, a member of this community of nations. We are struck with a profound sense of injustice and a profound sympathy with the Ukrainian people who are fighting for their country, their cities, their homes, their families, their lives, their freedom, and their future. The Russian leadership’s aggression and brutal armed attack is in clear violation of Ukraine’s sovereignty and territorial integrity within its internationally recognized borders. The Russian leadership’s actions greatly violate international law and the principles of the UN Charter. They are an attack on this organization, and this cannot stand. Last week, the Russian leadership decided it would erase Ukraine’s right to determine its own future. This cannot stand. Mr. President, Russia counted on the world to remain silent, but we are acting. And on this day, and until peace prevails and every Ukrainian can safely return to their homes, we stand with Ukraine. The devastating consequences of this aggression, not only for Europe but globally, cannot be overstated. Russian aggression against Ukraine will have global and long-term negative consequences, challenging the rules-based international order if we let it go unanswered. In the time ahead, we fear increased suffering with potentially large number of casualties and extensive destruction of civilian infrastructure. We see fighting unfolding in and around urban areas, and we are deeply concerned about the long-term cumulative and protracted harm to the civilian population. Mr. President, we will continue to look at every single instrument in our toolbox as a matter of urgency. Sanctions have already been enacted to cripple Putin’s ability to finance his war machine. And likewise, the role of the Lukashenko regime and Belarus in enabling the attack on Ukraine also demands a firm response. Nordic Baltic countries have been delivering financial, humanitarian, and military assistance to the people of Ukraine. And many of our partners and friends around the globe have joined us. Every nation must look at how to further support Ukraine. Mr. President, during the days we have watched with horror broadcasted images of families separated, children sheltering in the safety of the Kiev subway system, kindergartens destroyed by Russian ordinances, and the ruins of bombarded residential buildings in the center of the capital of Ukraine. We are outraged by indiscriminate attacks on civilians in this unlawful and immoral war of conquest that serves no purpose and no principle, but the naked quest for power and territory. This cannot stand. Russia must respect international humanitarian law and human rights law. Full and unhindered humanitarian access must be guaranteed. Civilians must be protected. We call on Russia to stop this sinister war, and we echo the plea of the Secretary. We call on Russia to stop this senseless war, and we echo the plea of the Secretary-General. We demand an immediate ceasefire, and we urge Russia to withdraw all its forces from Ukraine and return genuinely to the path of dialogue and negotiation. Mr. President, let me be clear: every civilian death, every war crime will be recorded, and we will ensure that the perpetrators of these heinous crimes are held accountable and brought to justice. History has its eyes on us. Every legal avenue available will be used to hold the aggressor to account. Ukraine has sent a request to the International Court of Justice on Russia’s erroneous and absurd allegations of genocide in Ukraine, which the Russian Federation has cynically used as a false pretext for its invasion. The International Criminal Court’s prosecutor has also noted that he is monitoring Russia’s invasion of Ukraine and has jurisdiction to prosecute war crimes and crimes against humanity. The prosecutor’s office may and will exercise its jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crimes against humanity or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine, as Ukraine has accepted the court’s jurisdiction. We fully support the ICC’s monitoring of the situation. Colleagues, the rules-based international order, which governs how states interact with one another, was put in place drawing from the horrible lessons of two world wars, promising one another that future generations would be saved from the scourge of war. The attack on Ukraine, the Russian invasion of Ukraine, is a direct assault on the principles and purposes of the UN Charter. This cannot stand. The matter is now in the hands of the General Assembly, where one veto cannot overrule the UN membership, where the power and legitimacy is manifested in numbers. Russia’s shameful use of the veto on a matter it bears full responsibility for is completely unacceptable. As a permanent member of the Security Council, Russia has a special responsibility for maintaining peace and security, not to violate the very principles of the UN Charter. The latest meetings of the Council demonstrated the need for reform. It demonstrated who had the firmness and valor to defend the UN Charter. No country can grow and thrive in isolation. Russia knows this. The General Assembly has the power to send a firm message to Putin, and what we say today and how we vote on the resolution presented will make a difference on the ground in Ukraine and to the Ukrainian people. They will be watching us, hoping that the world will come in on the side of the UN Charter and our promise of never again. Colleagues, Russia’s unlawful and brutal armed attack on Ukraine will affect and impact everyone. And if we do not join our forces to turn back this tide today, we will be even less equipped to deal with similar crises and crimes in the future, wherever, on whichever continent they occur. Over the last week, we have heard powerful statements from representatives of every continent on this planet, from Africa to Asia, from Europe to the Americas, that Russia’s behaviour towards a fellow member of the United Nations cannot stand, and we will hear more today. And to those who still refer to two parties to a conflict, we echo the words of a protester who had written on her sign: “If Russia stops fighting, there will be no more war. If Ukrainians stop fighting, there will be no more Ukraine.” That is the simple reality before us. That is the simple truth. The world will hold Russia and Belarus accountable for their actions, Russia as the main aggressor, Belarus as the enabler. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Denmark. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of France.
Mr. President, Russia, day by day, is continuing its work of destruction in Ukraine. And on top of these brutal and criminal acts, we see a dangerous rhetoric which is further stoking tension. Russia is conducting this armed aggression in violation of the most fundamental principles of the United Nations Charter, which all members of this Assembly have the obligation to respect. On Friday, it was the only one to oppose a Security Council resolution co-sponsored by 82 states. The General Assembly today has a historic responsibility, that of relaying loudly and robustly the voice of citizens who, across all continents, including in Russia, are asking for the immediate cessation of this war and for the withdrawal of the Russian army from Ukrainian territory. France supports the efforts underway within this Assembly to prepare a resolution demanding that Russia put an end to its aggression and respect the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. We call for all members of this Assembly to vote in favour of this text, over and above Ukraine. It is an issue of defending the Charter and the very reason for the existence of the United Nations. Let’s be clear about this: faced with the armed aggression against a people, faced with the civilian victims increasing in number every day, faced with the outflows of those who are forced to seek refuge, no one can avert their gaze. Abstention is not an option. Abstaining is to agree that might is right. We call upon all member states to vote in favour of the primacy of law over force. Mr. President, the implication of this emergency special session does not mean that the Security Council is refusing to exercise its responsibilities. The Council will be meeting this afternoon to discuss the humanitarian situation in Ukraine. France, together with Mexico, will be tabling a draft resolution in order to guarantee the protection of civilians and safe and unhindered humanitarian access in order to respond to the urgent needs of the Ukrainian population. France and its partners in the European Union stand firmly, shoulder to shoulder, with the Ukrainian people. The European Union has already announced 90 million euros of humanitarian aid. France will also play its part. With our partners, France is mobilized to ensure that the international response is able to confront the aggression committed by Russia. The European Union and France is president for the first six months of this year, has adopted measures to block access of the Russian Central Bank to its reserves. We’ve also announced the funding of defensive equipment for Ukraine. Mr. President, France salutes the courage being shown by the people of Ukraine. We call upon this Assembly to express to them without delay our support through the adoption of a resolution. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of France. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom.
On Friday, 81 member states supported a resolution in the Security Council to stop the war in Ukraine. Russia was completely isolated in opposing that resolution. Today, we gather in the General Assembly to stand against Russia’s illegal attack on Ukraine and its assault on the principles of the UN Charter. The facts are clear: Russia has invaded Ukraine without provocation and without justification. Russia has rained missiles and rockets down on Kyiv, Kharkiv, Odessa and other cities. The brave men and women of Ukraine are enduring the barrage and have held their cities from Russian invaders. They are fighting for their country, for their continued future as a free and independent But the humanitarian consequences are already immense. We hear of babies born in air raid shelters, children with bomb craters in their kindergartens, and today, news of the shelling of residential areas in Kharkiv. These are indiscriminate attacks on Ukrainian civilians. Seven million Ukrainians are displaced. In short, the scourge of war that our United Nations was created to prevent has been unleashed by Russia on Ukraine. The international response to Russia’s aggression has been united and swift. Around the world and here in this building, we must stand together to defend the rules and enforce the accountability that we have built together. If we do not stand up for them now, then the safety of every nation’s borders and independence are at risk. That is why we also condemn Belarusian support for Russia’s invasion of Ukraine. As the Secretary-General said last week, Russia’s actions are violations of the territorial integrity and sovereignty of Ukraine and conflict directly with the principles of the Charter of the United Nations. And as he said today, the only answer is peace. So our message today is simple: we offer our unequivocal support for Ukraine and the Ukrainian people. We call on President Putin to stop this senseless war, and we urge all fellow members of the United Nations to speak up for Ukraine and to defend the Charter. Slava Ukraini!
I thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Georgia.
My delegation aligns itself with the statement delivered by the representative of the European Union, and in my national capacity, I would like to add the following comment. Excellences. We have gathered today in an emergency session because the Security Council once again failed us in acting as a guardian of peace and security. So now it is upon us, the General Assembly, where we all have equal rights to vote, to stand up and make it certain that the United Nations delivers on the purpose it was created for. The use of armed force by a UN member against sovereignty, territorial integrity or political independence of another member state violates Article 2.4 of the UN Charter and constitutes an act of aggression as defined by the Resolution 3314 of this very body adopted by consensus. What we see in Ukraine is an act of aggression on the part of Russia, and we condemn it. Last week, I spoke from this very rostrum about Russia’s pattern of behaviour against its neighbours. Russia’s full-scale military aggression against my country should have served as a wake-up call for all, but alas, it has not been possible to prevent the similar scenario unfolding few years later in Ukraine. Not to repeat myself, let me just say that we in Georgia do know what the toll of war is. We do know what is these disastrous consequences, and that is people, innocent civilians, women and children, who pay the highest price. It is devastating, not only for those who live through it, but passes down to generations. Let me be clear: core principles enshrined in the UN Charter, the Helsinki Final Act, the Charter of Paris for New Europe, and the commitments taken under the Budapest Memorandum are non-negotiable nor subject to revision by any country, no matter how large or powerful it may be. Territorial acquisition through use of force or a threat to do so is illegal and impermissible. Georgia calls on the Russian Federation to immediately cease its military activities and withdraw all its forces and armaments from Ukraine, allow immediate access to all international humanitarian and human rights mechanisms wherever in the entire territory of Ukraine, reverse the decisions related to the status of integral parts of Ukraine’s Donetsk and Luhansk regions and Crimea, and to do so the same with regard to Georgia: withdraw forces, allow humanitarian access, reverse the status-related decision with regard to the occupied territories. Georgia was among the co-sponsors of the draft Security Council resolution that got vetoed, and we are the co-sponsors of the draft General Assembly resolution that is soon to be considered. This resolution, although it concerns Ukraine, is a watershed moment for all of us, and I would dare say for the future of the rules-based order and our United Nations. So I call on you to vote in favour of the proposed draft, to vote to save the succeeding generations from the scourge of war, to vote for the United Nations. And in conclusion, we welcome the Secretary-General’s decision to scale up the United Nations’ humanitarian operations in and around Ukraine, and let me once again reiterate Georgia’s unwavering support of independence, sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine within its internationally recognized borders, including Crimea and Donbass, and Ukraine’s navigational rights in its territorial waters. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Georgia. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Poland.
Mr. President, Mr. Secretary-General, distinguished delegates. Poland fully supports the resolution just tabled by Ukraine and calls on each member state to stand firmly behind it. We deeply believe that through this act, we will demonstrate our adherence to the principles enshrined in the UN Charter. Only by upholding those fundamental principles, we can see the truly peaceful and long-term solution to the conflict caused by the Russian aggression in Ukraine. In that sense, the resolution we are about to vote paves the way to a meaningful diplomatic effort to end the atrocities of this war. To achieve peace, Poland, as a current chairmanship in office of the Organization of Security and Cooperation Europe, called yesterday for the immediate ceasefire in Ukraine to let humanitarian organizations deliver assistance. But these appeals for peace are even more urgent when you look at the events in Ukraine from a close-distance perspective. Let me tell you how we Poles see and respond to the horrors of this war as neighbours and friends of Ukraine. There is no doubt that we are confronted with one of the biggest humanitarian crises in Europe since World War II. In the first three days of Russian aggression facilitated by the complicity of the Belarusian regime of Alexander Lukashenko, we witnessed almost more than 500,000 people In the first three days of Russian aggression facilitated by the complicity of the Belarusian regime of Alexander Lukashenko, we witnessed almost more than 500,000 people fleeing Ukraine, 300,000 of which found refuge in my home country. We keep our borders open. Our diplomatic missions help those who seek refuge in Poland. The nationals of all countries who suffered from Russian aggression or whose life is at risk can seek shelter in my country. And I can tell you, only for the first half of today, we welcomed people of 150, 125 nationalities fleeing Ukraine to Poland. So that means it concerns us all. The list of these nationalities are too long to read to you, so I just read the first those with more than 100 nationals fleeing to Poland only today in the morning. Ukraine, Uzbekistan, Nigeria, India, Morocco, Kazakhstan, Pakistan, Afghanistan, Poland, Belarus, Iran, Turkey, Algeria, and Russia. This refuge applies also to the students, which I understand is a serious concern of some colleagues here in the chamber. The students are also welcome to Poland and they are offered to continue their studies in Poland. We know that some of the missions here in New York were targeted by the disinformation suggesting discriminatory practices at the Polish-Ukrainian border based on race and religion. I can tell you this is a complete lie and a terrible insult to us. Besides giving refuge, Poland delivers to those who suffer a very practical and tangible help. My government organized a special trains for the elderly and mothers with small babies as well as convoys with supplies and medical aid. There are 7,000 beds in 20 hospitals ready for those wounded and sick, and I want to announce that the first Ukrainian refugee babies were born in Poland in the first 24, in the last 24 hours, and the first lifesaving operations were carried out for the elderly in our hospitals. Poland stands ready to cooperate closely with UN OCHA, International Committee of the Red Cross, and other humanitarian organizations to ease the burden of the civilians targeted by the Russian aggression. But what I am most proud of is the outpour of spontaneous readiness to help by individuals. Polish families are opening their homes to refugees. They offer clothes, food, and accommodation. Thousands of private cars are coming from all over Poland to pick up those who cross the border. On the first two days, we experienced a long traffic jams because of the number of cars coming from all corners of Poland. Polish people stand in lines for hours to donate blood for Ukraine. The scale of help was offered was so big that the government opened a special website, Helping Ukraine, where volunteers can register and get guidance on those in need. While diplomats in my mission are fulfilling our diplomatic duties here in New York, our family members and friends are welcoming refugees coming directly from the war zone. In this conflict, Poland may not be a geopolitical superpower, but we want to be a solidarity superpower, and this is how we want to change the grim reality for better. At the same time, I would like to pay a tribute to those Ukrainians who defend their motherland and continue to stand for their country's freedom. Those are not only soldiers, but also people like Vasilina, a 30-year-old mother of two small daughters, living in a village near the Polish-Ukrainian border. When offered a trip to Poland by my family, she answered, "I cannot leave Ukraine now. This is my country. I have to stay and take care of it." And now she is cooking food for soldiers and refugees at the border. A similar answer was given by our diplomats in Ukraine. We keep our embassies and consulates open, and they keep fulfilling their diplomatic and constitutional duties. Let me share with you, colleagues, the message to you I received today in the morning from our ambassador Bartosz Chicholski in Kyiv. I quote, "I am the Polish ambassador to Ukraine. I work in Kyiv, a city the size of Berlin inhabited by over 4 million people. From Thursday morning, I have to hide from the bombing in my basement several times a day. I wake to exchanges of machine gun fire. Windows are shaking from the missile detonations. I am convinced that right now, when you are deciding in New York, hundreds of thousands of terrified residents of Kharkiv, Dnipro, Zhitomir, Myriupol, Lviv, and Kyiv look at you with hope and faith in the power of international law." End of quote. And I wish to conclude by a reference to the warning expressed by a 19th-century Russian novelist, Fyodor Dostoevsky, in his book with a meaningful title, Crime and Punishment. The message of the book is following. When someone, just like Raskolnikov, thinks he is exceptional and free from moral obligations and therefore feels entitled to committing a crime of murder, in the end, he faces the punishment from the crime itself. Because committing a crime is already one's biggest punishment. There is no crime without the punishment. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished representative of Poland. And now I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Austria.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as usual, Austria aligns itself with the statement by the European Union. However, we also want to add our voice in our national capacity, because what is currently being deliberately inflicted upon Ukraine does not allow us to remain silent. Excellencies, colleagues, fellow Ukrainians. Let me start by thanking you, Mr. Secretary General, for your clear words this morning and these past days. We are grateful to see that the United Nations is there to help those suffering and in dire need for help. We meet here today to discuss the Russian aggression against Ukraine, to discuss the violation of Article 2.4 of our UN Charter. That we meet here today in this room is a good thing and a bad thing. It's bad because it means, after several days since Russia launched its aggression against the sovereign territory of Ukraine, we are still witnessing military attacks, terrible human suffering, and loss of life. It's also bad because questions of peace and security should be addressed by the Security Council. As primary responsible for upholding international peace and security, the Security Council cannot remain silent when basic principles of our international rules-based order are trampled by military boots and squashed by tanks. Last Friday, however, the Security Council decision was blocked by the veto of a permanent member, the Russian Federation, even though 81 members of the international community supported the draft resolution of the co-pen holders. Yes, the veto power is foreseen in the UN Charter, but so is the obligation to uphold UN principles. If in the 21st century, the Security Council is blocked in a situation that constitutes a blatant breach of international law, we should ask ourselves if this system of veto powers is still able to regulate our international relations. Yet, colleagues, our meeting here today is also good. It's good that the General Assembly is there to step in if the Security Council cannot fulfill its mandate. And it's good that we now have the opportunity here in this General Assembly Hall to raise our voices, to recall the principles of the UN Charter, our Charter, and to state clearly that we will not stay silent if the Charter is violated in the most serious way. This is our right. This is our obligation as members of the organization. Colleagues, at the end of this debate, we will vote on a resolution condemning the aggression of Russia against Ukraine and showing solidarity with the people of Ukraine. Austria will vote yes on the resolution and urges all of you to do so also. By voting yes, we show the world that the UN is able to take its responsibility to defend the rule of law, international law, and the UN Charter. By voting yes, we show that these acts and similar horrifying acts are not tolerated by the international community. And most importantly, by voting yes, we show the Ukrainian people that they are not alone. I know that for many of us, such votes can be difficult. Some say this is a regional issue, a European problem. Colleagues, an attack against one of our members, one of members of this organization, is an attack on us all. In our interconnected world, our world is one region. Cyber weapons strike everywhere. Missiles have global reach. The world is not only regional, it has become local. Some say we must respect security concerns. Yes, colleagues, we must. Everyone has security concerns. Ukraine had them and gave up nuclear weapons and trusted that others would not harm them. But clearly, if you have security concerns, solve them with dialogue, not tanks. If a country with one of the largest armies and nuclear arsenals feels insecure, it should seek cooperation, dialogue, disarmament, and not force against others. Some say, "Well, well, look at others. Look at these other instances that we have had. What about past violations?" Colleagues, we know this "what-aboutism" well, trying to justify evil with past evil, trying to excuse yourself by pointing to the faults of others. But just because we did not stand up in the past to injustice and evil, that should not prevent us from standing up now. Yes, it's true, others have committed aggressions, crimes, and faults. Yes, the international community has sometimes shown a lack of unity to act. And yes, the international community has sometimes been too hesitant. But let us not continue to make that same mistake now. Let us start a new era when we work together and stand up united for our common principles. Let's defend the rule of law. Let's not give in to the reign of the powerful. Let us vote yes on that resolution. Mr. President, Austria is not part of any military alliance. We rely for our security on the respect and implementation of international law, of treaties, of custom, including humanitarian law. Reports about Russian attacks on civilians and civilian objects in urban areas are extremely worrying. Rockets or missiles hitting apartment buildings in Kiev cannot be accepted. These attacks constitute war crimes under international humanitarian law. We urge Russia to strictly adhere to international humanitarian law, in particular regarding the protection of civilians in urban warfare, and immediately cease these attacks and refrain from using explosive weapons in populated areas. We strongly condemn the use of cluster munitions, which is incompatible with international humanitarian law and outlawed under the Convention on Cluster Munitions. And colleagues, the threat of use of nuclear weapons? Any nuclear threat of this kind is a violation of the principles of the UN Charter. The implied catastrophic humanitarian consequences do not respect borders and pose a threat to all of humanity. This is completely unacceptable. Perpetrators and those responsible ordering these crimes need to be held accountable. The International Criminal Court may exercise jurisdiction over and investigate any acts of genocide, crime against humanity, or war crimes committed within the territory of Ukraine. In this regard, we welcome the statement of ICC prosecutor Khan, reminding us all that his office can exercise jurisdiction over and investigate any act of genocide, crime against humanity, or war crime committed within the territory of Ukraine since February 2014. Mr. President, in the last couple of days, Ukrainians have endured incredible human suffering. In order to help ease the humanitarian catastrophe, Austria contributed 2.5 million euros to the ICRC and NGOs, and additional humanitarian assistance will be decided soon. Those organizations' valuable work must be ensured by guaranteeing humanitarian access. Colleagues, in sum, Austria condemns the Russian aggression against Ukraine. Austria calls on Russia to reverse its decision to recognize the self-proclaimed Donetsk and Luhansk People's Republics, which represents a grave violation of the sovereignty and territorial integrity of Ukraine. Austria urges Russia to immediately withdraw its troops and stop any further bloodshed and return to the path of peaceful dialogue like any member of the UN is obliged to do. Vienna is ready to host and facilitate such dialogue. We hope that today's start of bilateral discussions between delegations from Ukraine and Russia can serve as a first step towards an urgently needed ceasefire. And colleagues, we call on you to vote yes on today's resolution. I know it's not always easy. Many of us have good relations with Russia. We love the culture, admire the traditions, and have good Russians friends. But a good friend, an honest friend, will speak up and say what needs to be said to do and what needs to be done when a friend commits an illegal, an evil act. This is what this resolution is for. Imagine for one moment that you are in Ukraine's shoes. What would you expect from the UN, from this General Assembly, if you were in Ukraine's place? In this dark hour, it is our moral, our legal obligation to condemn the violations of the Charter and show solidarity with the victim of an aggression. Austria will show its full solidarity with Ukraine, the Ukraine government, Ukrainian people. We stand with you. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Austria.